Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. It is Tuesday, April 26th, 4:33 PM. I apologize for the late start this afternoon. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. As we do at every board meeting, I will read our board norms and protocols. So as a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So again, good afternoon. I just want to say welcome to all of my board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, to all of our staff, any of our invited guests that are with us either in person or online. We're glad to have you with us. So with that, I will ask Ms. Smith to do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I would now entertain a motion to approve today's regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll jump right into our agenda. First up, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things to share this evening. First, I want to start off by saying Kansas City, Kansas Public School is proud to celebrate Sumner Academy of the Arts and Science as the school was named the top school in the state of Kansas for the fourth year in a row by U.S. News and World Report. And Sumner Academy was also named the number one high school in the Kansas City metro area. Sumner's number 12 nationally among magnet schools and 32, number 32 nationally overall. So congratulations to Principal Rick Malone, teacher, staff, and students and parents for their collective efforts toward academic excellence. These rankings are based off of the number of students that are exposed to AP and IB opportunities and offerings, graduation rate, diversity of the student body, and the number of students who receive counseling for college financial aid and other opportunities. So congratulations to Sumner. Also, I'm excited to share that swim lessons will be a part of the Extended Learning Summer Program at all levels. Eugene Ware Elementary, all the students who attend that location will be receiving swim lessons or have the opportunity. And then our staff from our middle and high schools met representatives from the YMCA last week to discuss how we can move forward with expanding the learner swim program in our middle and high schools. And we will have offerings at the locations that have pools in our high schools this summer, and we're working out those details. So just want to encourage any of our parents and our students who may be interested in that to check with their high school principals to learn about the opportunities. We also are looking at opportunities to continue this partnership throughout the school year at both our middle and high schools and through our Kid Zone program next school year. On Thursday, the high school students' art showcase will be held at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Art Gallery from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. This event is free and open to the public. April is Autism Acceptance Month, and KC KPS is here to show our support. Take time this month to help create acceptance for all and encourage those in the community to learn more about autism. We will be hosting kindergarten roundup on May 4th. If you have a child who will be going into kindergarten in the 22, 23 school year, you must register them online in Infinite Campus Portal before attending kindergarten roundup. For information, more information, you can look at our district website or contact your child's local school, and they can assist you. And the last thing that I would like to share is the district is hosting another vaccination and booster event tomorrow, April 27th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Grant Elementary School. This clinic is for ages five and up. They're offering first and second dose of Pfizer and boosters for those who are eligible. This event is being held in partnership with Vibrant Health and the Urban League of Greater Kansas City. So please come out if you need to get your vaccination or booster. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few remarks on my behalf. First, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Stubblefield and our leadership team and all of our staff who helped to welcome the OBT team during the KISA visit this past week. I was able to join. I believe a few board members were also able to join. And so just really appreciate your hospitality and the time and work and effort that all of you had put in for preparing for the meeting. And I look forward for us to learn more about the feedback that we received. This past week, I, along with several staff, were able to attend the Caring for Kids Gala, and it was a great opportunity to learn about some of the support that our students and our community received. So again, thank you to all of our staff who attended and were able to learn more and celebrate some of our students. A reminder that the Kansas City, Kansas Schools Foundation for Excellence has their I Believe campaign going on currently. This campaign runs from March 15th through April 30th, so you still have some time to give. It's a great opportunity for staff, teachers, and students to raise funds from the foundation standpoint in order to offer grants for classroom supplies and equipment, professional development, student enrichment activities, and community enrichment activities, and so much more. So if you would like to give, there's still time to do so. You can log on to the foundation's website at kcksfoundation.org. Board, don't forget that we do have a few upcoming special board meetings that you should have received emails about. Just make sure that you confirm with Ms. Smith whether you are able to attend or if there's some challenge in attending. Tomorrow, we have a special board meeting here in the boardroom beginning at 1:00 o'clock in person. For those that can't attend in person, we will have Zoom option for those that are unable to join in person. And that'll be for budget purposes and for our self-evaluation, a couple of other items that we need to discuss. And then May 3rd, it should be on your calendar potentially at 2:00 PM, and that would be a budget meeting. May 13th at 3:00 PM, also for budget purposes, those two would be via Zoom. And then May 20th at noon, hold that afternoon as well for our continued board self-evaluation, and that would be in person here in the boardroom as well. Again, you should have received those via email from Ms. Smith. If there's a question or if you're unable to make one or any of those, please let Ms. Smith know at your earliest convenience. And then lastly, just kind of a word of encouragement as we finish out the month of April and enter the month of May, just want to continue to encourage all of our staff, our faculty, our students, and families to finish out the year strong, right? Just give it all you have as we finish out this school year. I know we continue to have some challenges, but you know, I just want to encourage all of you, students, staff, families, and community alike. Together, we can finish out and have a great school year, a great end of the school year. And we believe and are so proud of each of you and the work that you've put into this year. So just finish out strong. You got this. And yeah, we care about you, and we know you can finish out the school year strong. So thank you. And that reminds me, board, you should have received your graduation assignments as well from Ms. Smith. And if you haven't, please make sure those are on your calendar. You're obviously open to attend all graduations, but you have your assignments where you will be present and speaking. If there are any challenges to those, please make sure you let Ms. Smith know as well. With that, I will open up to see if there's any other board commentary.
I would just like to add, myself and then a few other, a couple other board members had the opportunity of judging some of our Eisenhower students, so a school that I attended. So I was very proud to do that. But it was hosted at Washington High School. So we have brilliant eighth graders, as you know. They had a lot of good ideas that they would like for the district to consider. I took note of those things. Some of them are things that we're already talking about. So it was really nice to see them putting their minds to work also and having a voice at the table. So thank you for the invite and great job.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Page?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the program sponsored by the Gifted Program. We have a lot of talented young writers, very creative young people who were building roller coasters and what have you. And the kids were really excited, their parents were excited, and it was just a joy to see them in action as well as attending negotiation meetings with Mr. Goheen. And hopefully, we can have that all done before the year is out. And I had the opportunity to work with Bertram Carruthers, Ms. Molly, and we're trying to figure out ways that we can make their dismissal a lot easier and not so complicated.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I know I spoke already. I just also want to say we had a lot of amazing prom pictures out there. I get a chance to see all that stuff on social media, and it also helps that I have teenagers. So we had, our students were beautiful. And so I just want to call out prom season is here, and it was a really amazing time for our students.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Clark. All right, seeing no other comments, thank you, board. You all are as active as ever, and I love seeing you out there doing as much as we can for our students. All right, we'll continue on with our agenda. Next up, I'd entertain a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please. I believe you're muted, Ms. Smith.
I'm sorry. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Dr. Nguyen? I don't see.
Oh, she hasn't joined just yet. I wanted to mention.
Thank you. All right, thank you, board. Next agenda item, I would, we have our Turner Quarterly Report from our Director of Libraries, Ms. Carol Levers.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield. This is, we're just asking the board to accept this report as an informational item. It is required of us every quarter by the inter-local agreement to share the Turner Community Budget Report to the three parties, and that is USD 500, Turner Recreation Center, and the Wyandotte County Library Board.
Any questions for Ms. Levers? Moved to approve the informational report?
So moved by Maxine Drew.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Levers.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I meant to say it during my comments, that the library will be returning to its more normal hours starting May 16th. We'll send out more communication, but I wanted to share that on behalf of Ms. Levers because we've gotten a few questions. But starting May 16th, they will return to their normal hours pre-pandemic.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. All right, continuing with our agenda. Next up, one of my favorite parts of board meetings. We get to recognize and give awards for some of our students and staff. So first up is our Employee of the Month. I would invite Ms. Devon to come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, board and Dr. Stubblefield, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to be able to introduce to you the April Employees of the Month. We have two, and so the first staff member I'd like to introduce is Kurt Wagner. He is the Assistant Director of Physical Properties. And Reggie Bauer is the Supervisor of Special Projects. Mr. Wagner is on, will be here in just a few moments. So he was caught up with something, but he'll be joining us in just a few moments. I'd like to describe him a little bit to you. He has such a high work ethic. He is always very friendly and professional with his interactions with staff and the community. He is also very responsive to the many needs across the district, so we truly appreciate him. Mr. Byers had a previous engagement tonight, so he is not with us, but he is actively learning his new role, and he brings lots of enthusiasm and energy to the workplace. He perseveres through many tough situations, and he always strives to do his very best. So I do want to share one specific work example that we'll share regarding Mr. Wagner and Mr. Byers' just very strong and dedicated work ethic. In March, both of these gentlemen worked tirelessly over spring break to complete much-needed repairs to the Wyandotte baseball field in order to have the very first spring home game. So many players, families, fans, staff members, they all enjoyed their first spring home game, and it was definitely a reflection of the work of these two gentlemen. So this high level of support has made such a great impact to our students. So we want to thank Mr. Wagner and Mr. Byers for being such exemplary employees. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Next up, we'll invite Mr. Linkus, our Chief of Staff, to the podium.
Good afternoon, board, President Lopez, Vice President Clark, fellow members of the board, Dr. Stubblefield. Thank for the opportunity to come up here and honor some of our students. It's always great to have the opportunity to honor our students and see the great things that they're doing. The first student that I want to introduce is a pre-K student, and she is at M.E. Pearson Elementary School, and that is Kalen Evans. And she was nominated by Juliana Alvarado Vega. And I'm going to go ahead and invite them up to the podium with. And I will tell you, she was not this shy today when we took the picture. She high-fived us and was excited, so we're glad she's here.
Hello, board and Dr. Stubblefield and everyone here. So the reason why I nominated Kalen Evans, not only for her age level group, she has shown compassion, responsibility, as well as cooperating with her friends and peers. Not only does she, when we teach her the rules or expectations of the classroom, she follows them as well as shows the students and helps out around. As well as, you know, in pre-K, we have a wide range of from three to five-year-olds, and so she is very helpful with the three-year-olds especially. And she just shows kindness all around. She is a student that you just want to be around and want to teach. She is eager to learn, always has a smile on her face, and so excited to just be here at school. So not only that, she has tremendously have improved in any skill that she has been in the classroom. So this is why she has, this is why I nominated her, and I'm so glad that she won this award. So thank you so much.
And I will say there were also many complimentary comments from the group who accompanied me on her jacket that she was wearing along with her outfit today. And a number of the people with me said they were jealous, and they wanted to cut the same Jean-Jean jacket. So Kalen, thank you. Congratulations. Our next winner is from Emerson Elementary. And unfortunately, Seth Words cannot be with us tonight because he's a little under the weather. But he's a fifth grader, and he was nominated by Maggie Scanlon. Well, they're not here, so I'll go ahead and read anyway. I have the picture up on the screen. Seth is a fifth-grade student who is new to Emerson. He always works his hardest even when the work is very difficult for him. He's made enormous gains, especially in the third quarter. What makes him a good candidate for Student of the Month is his compassion for everyone, especially those that are different, friendless, or those that struggle with school. His understanding of differences in others and is always welcoming. We let him help out in the SLC, and he'll take those students under his wing and will help them with their coursework. All the younger students look up to him and adore him. We're so proud of him, and we couldn't imagine the Emerson community without him. So although he's not here, if we could just have a round of applause for Seth. Our next winner is from Gloria Willis Middle School, and it's Peyton Herr. Peyton is a sixth grader, and although the nomination was listed with Vanessa Ibera, it actually was not from Vanessa, so. was not from Vanessa, so, but thank you for Vanessa for getting those into us. But if I could please have Peyton come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Booth. I'm actually Peyton's sixth-grade math teacher and was able to compile the comments from all of his teachers, which is how we ended up sending it to Ms. Ibera and getting him nominated for this honor. I'd like to read what we wrote. Peyton Herr is kind, helpful, and has the work ethic that exemplifies a KC KPS Student of the Month. When a student or adult interacts with Peyton, they feel welcomed and valued. Peyton is creative and makes connections between the different topics he is learning in his classes. He consistently produces high-quality work and brings out the same level from anyone who works with him. When his classmates found out that he was going to receive this award, they all asked if they could also write comments. I promise not to read them all, but I do have a couple that I would like to share with you. One student said that Peyton Herr is always thinking of others before himself. Another student said that he makes plenty of friends and he deserves this. Peyton is someone who I would go to if I need help on something. He's smart and he's never in a bad mood. And then the last is Peyton, you are the most kind, smart, helpful student. I really wish you the best in life. So.
And our last Student of the Month, last but not least, as we say, is from the Fairfax Learning Center. So we're very excited that we've had a variety of students from all different, all of our different campuses, and it's Kylie Yost. Unfortunately, we could not catch Kylie today when we stopped by, but that's because she was at Tech, and she was taking some courses over there, and schedules unfortunately just didn't overlap, so I'm going to, and she's an eleventh grader who was nominated by Michael Knight. So I saw Mr. Myers, and I saw, and I saw that Kylie's over there as well, so if y'all can come on up, please.
Good evening, everyone. I promised Kylie I would try my best not to embarrass her too much, but Kylie was someone who Mr. Knight nominated on behalf of our whole Behavioral Health Team, and the reason for that nomination is for us, Kylie really exemplifies what it means to be a Falcon. Kylie came to us winter of 2021, and since then has really soared, as we like to say, as a Falcon with us. She's been at Tech, she's doing amazing at Tech, and she's at Tech as a junior. So she's one of those students who came to us as on track, and not just on track, but thriving. Kylie is loved by her peers, by her staff, everyone. I just cannot say enough about her. I call her every day when I see her. Her last name is Yost, so she's Yostis with the Mostis every time we see her. So that's all I can say about Kylie. She's, well, there's a lot more I could say, but she's wonderful. So.
Congratulations again, Kylie, and we just consider, we'd just like to say once again, thank you to our staff for sending us nominees. Continue piling up that list because we do want to have a long and hard discussion because of the number of students, and just thank you to our schools for sending these individuals to us, and thank you to the Board for the opportunity to present them.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus, and again, congratulations to all of our students, and yes, thank you to all of our staff for, and keep, keep bringing those nominations forward. So again, congratulations to the students and to your families. Next on our agenda, a very special presentation. We have with us our good friend, a friend of the Kansas City, Kansas School District, Ms. Janet Wall, who's Vice Chair of the Kansas State Board of Education, and to hear more about our Challenge Award. So, Dr. Stubblefield, I don't know if there's anything else that you want to say before our friend, Ms. Janet, comes to the podium?
No, we're just so glad that Janet can be with us tonight to present this award to the schools that have earned it, and we are proud of all of our schools, but we want to take the time to recognize these schools who have earned the Kansas Challenge Award, and Janet will share a little bit more information, and then we'll recognize each one of these schools.
Hi, everyone. I didn't get to come up to shake hands. That's what I wanted to do, but I was, I thought, they changed this room since the last time I was here, so I didn't know what protocol was. So, thank you. And it's just amazing to be, thank you. It's, I can't tell you how exciting it is to be here, because as you well know, I think, you know how I think about you guys. I think I've said it many times about what you're doing. You're doing amazing things, and, and, you know, I know you're doing amazing things. I know what's happening in your schools, but you know what? It's kind of nice to be recognized every once in a while for when you're really doing exceptional things. And so that's why I'm here tonight. So anyway, I'm here to present, as she said, the Challenge Awards. Now, the Challenge Awards was created by the Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force. Now, that's a committee I have personally served on since I've been on the State Board, which has been a very long time. But it's, it's really my most fun one, because we, what we do is we recognize schools, we recognize individuals for accomplishments, and then we have, of course, the Governor Scholars Banquet, usually a banquet. We have that every year, so that's, that's exciting. We do a lot of things, Friends of Education. Now, the purpose of these awards are to recognize schools that are making a notable difference of students' academic achievement on the Kansas Assessment Results, sample size, socioeconomic status of those taking the test, graduation rate, and chronic absenteeism rate. The Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force is a nonprofit corporation whose primary purpose is to strengthen confidence in Kansas public schools and to increase awareness of the positive aspects of education in the state. Members of the, of the task force include probably, I think, almost all education groups, KNEA, USA, KASB, PTA, a lot of acronyms, but, you know, I think you all know who they are. KSHA, the State Board, and the Department of Education, as well as the American Association of University Women and the League of Women Voters. So we've got quite a prestigious group, you might say, on this committee, and they do a wonderful work. It's just amazing. This, the Challenge Awards is a statistical, statistical, that's a big word, statistical model used that includes 2021 math and reading state assessment scores, percentage of the sample size, of the sample that receives free or reduced-priced lunches, and the percent that are members of ethnic minority grad, ethnic minorities. Graduation rates are used, are factored in for the high schools, and chronic absenteeism rates are factored in at the elementary and the middle schools. Now, only schools that have a total percentage of free and reduced-price lunch students above the state average of forty-six point one-four are eligible to serve, are eligible for recognition. The schools are then, after that, they're all sorted into State Board districts. Now, this is very interesting, I think. As you know, I represent over twenty school districts. As I say, I represent all of Wyandotte, all of Leavenworth, Eastern Park, Douglas, Piece of Johnson, and I kind of go everywhere because I, I get pieces of districts, you know, other districts out there. So I have a bunch of districts. But what is interesting is this year, it's the first time I've only had KC K schools recognized, which I think speaks volumes to what's happening. I, I am so very proud of this, you know. So anyway, it is now my honor to present the awards to the following schools, and I'd appreciate it if you would come up here so I could shake your hand, and then I've been asked to make you stay, because afterwards they want to take a picture. So anyway, this is, and I tried to do them alphabetically, but I got confused on alphabetically. Somebody needs to tell me how to do alphabetically when you have a Joe Smith school. Is that my Joe or is that my Smith? I don't know. So I did it my way. So here's my way. The first school we're going to recognize is Arrowhead Middle School. That was easy. And I can't tell you, I mean, I'm just so proud. This just really makes me very, very proud. Congratulations. This is amazing. Please tell your staff how much I appreciate you. And here's the next one, and this is my alphabetizing. Bertram Carruthers Elementary School. Emerson Elementary. John Fisk Elementary. Mark Twain Elementary. This is one that doesn't get the award very often, but I'm very proud to present this one. Sumner Academy. Quite frankly, they do amazing. I'm so proud of them. Thank you for all your awards, but congratulations for this one. And last, but certainly not least, Thomas A. Edison Elementary. I'm coming. I'm letting them go first. They're the important people, not me.
All right. I want to see those smiles. Yeah, there we go. Smile. Keep smiling. Don't blink. Hold it. Keep smiling. Got to take one more. Good job. Y'all look great.
Congratulations to all of our schools who received an award today, and Janet, thank you so much for being here with us today. You are always welcome to be with us at, at the district. You are a good friend of ours, and we're always appreciative of all the advocacy that you do on behalf of our district and especially our students and families. So just thank you so much for all that you're doing, Janet. Thank you, Janet. All right. We will continue on. Again, just so very proud of all of our students and all of our schools for all the hard work that you're putting in to what you do every day to educate all of our students.
Yes.
We'll continue on with our agenda. Next is our, before we get to our community comment, I did, I forgot one other quick announcement this week. On Thursday, there is a Know Your Rights training at J.C. Harmon High School from six to seven thirty P.M. That's this Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, a Know Your Rights training that's being hosted by the school district in partnership with El Centro Communities Concerned for Immigrants and Refugees and Advocates for Immigrants and Refugees here locally. So again, that's Thursday at six o'clock at J.C. Harmon. Thank you. Okay, so for community comment, again, just a reminder on our policy for community comment, anyone is always open to come and attend our meeting or, or give a community comment, whether in person via Zoom or submit written comment. Please do so if you are interested in doing so. No later than the Monday before the board meeting at noon, and you may contact our Board Clerk, Ms. Leslie Smith, to submit your name and information. As I invite you to the podium, please don't forget to state your name. Make sure our Board Clerk has your contact information for purposes of, of our, of our role, and then also you are limited to three minutes when you are speaking, and during community comment, you may address the Board in general, and then, but there is no direct discussion back and forth between the Board and the community comment. First, on our comment list, we have Mr. David Sumi. Okay. I don't see him here, so we will continue on. If he shows up here shortly, we will invite him up. The next comment that we did receive, and it is up on Board Docs for everyone to review, Board members, it is available to all of us as well, a submitted, submitted comment by Mr. Peter Vanderhorst, written comment, I should say, so please make sure that we read those comments submitted by Mr. Peter Vanderhorst. Thank you so much for submitting your comment. Next, I would invite Ms. Leila Hauser, if she is with us, to please come forward. Thank you so much. Again, please just state your name and make sure our Board Clerk has your information, and your time will start after you give your name.
Okay. Ms. Smith is not here, so I have not signed in with her, but.
We'll make sure that we, yep, you are good. Don't you worry. Thank you.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Leila Hauser, and I am a Speech and Language Pathologist at Morse Early Childhood Center. I am first delighted to tell you how wonderful it has been to finally have the option to remove my mask for the duration of the past two school days and see some precious smiles amongst our preschoolers. I would like to thank Ms. Russell for initiating the mask policy survey. I am grateful to hear the honest opinions of thousands of staff and families across the district whose voices have been heard collectively for the first time in months. The overwhelming majority stated that masks should be optional for a wide range of reasons, and I'm asking the Board to carefully consider the inputs submitted by the families of the children we serve and the dedicated staff who have walked this beaten path for days, weeks, and months, and decide this evening to honor and respect the views of our district family far above any other entity by voting that masks remain optional from this day forward and clearly communicate that decision in languages that are understood by families across the district. across the district. I would also like to give a shout out to my Morse Early Childhood Center family. To say this has been one of the most challenging and disheartening years is an understatement, but we have tried our best to remain strong for each other. Though important questions we have asked remain unanswered by the administration responsible for leading our program, we have determined that we will do what is best for our family and students in the weeks that remain. I would like to especially thank our paraprofessionals, Yogi, Debbie, Tammy, and Tracy. We absolutely could not measure your worth, and your contribution is desperately needed in every classroom, every day. To Crystal, Quita, and Kendra, the paraprofessionals who were removed from our building in September, your absence has been felt every day since your departure, and we miss you. We are currently operating with the amount of classroom support that is being proposed for next year, and we can already tell you conclusively, it is not working well, and it is far from best practice. I have been closely monitoring the H.R. report with its alarming number of resignations, and since spring break, there have been over 200 resignations district-wide. Do you have a plan for staff retention? At Morse alone, we will watch at least 50% of our staff walk out the door in May to other opportunities, not because they didn't enjoy working with our students, but largely because key finding number eight and recommendation 4.1 from the KU study, which stated that transformation was required in the special education department, has not been addressed with any level of efficacy to date. If the board plans to act on this recommendation, it must happen now as the matters to be considered are urgent. I do not envy your positions or the challenges that you must navigate, but I do fully expect you to make decisions that are in the very best interest of those who you took an oath to serve. I hope that we can all rebound, reimagine, and renew the way we approach education for our staff, students, families, and community. Thank you. Thank you for giving me a few extra seconds. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
I found it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yes.
I would invite Mr. Sumi to the podium. I saw him walk in. Thank you. Again, Mr. Sumi, please state your name, and then your time will start, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
My apologies for missing the scheduled slot. Difficult to get here directly after work. It's nice to see your faces, many of you, for the first time. Members of the board, I'm David Sumi. While I stand here very thankful that KCK students and teachers can finally join their peers with a reprieve from masks, it's imperative for the board to act to ensure that masks remain optional, decoupled from irrelevant health metrics given well-documented ineffectiveness and harm of universal masking. I commend Mr. Lopez for initiating the discussion at the last meeting, but the ensuing vitriol and no votes revealed that some on this board were mired in misinformation and bias. To date, stacks of published, peer-reviewed evidence and examples from thousands of other mask optional districts, including all those in this city and state, have thus far been roundly dismissed in favor of a religious devotion to the false keeping everyone safe narrative. The reality, however, is that your mask isn't to keep anyone else safe from COVID. Your mask is for you. To make it very plain, the CDC's own Dr. Greta Masetti gave a press briefing with CDC Director Rochelle Walensky two months ago, when they amended their indoor masking guidance and added the county metrics that, as I speak, dictate mask policy in our district. Dr. Masetti states, and I quote, "People who wear high-quality masks are well-protected, even if others around you are not masking." That bears repeating, even if others around you are not masking. It couldn't be any clearer. If you continue to believe that a mask will keep you safe, you can wear it. But the CDC is admitting, belatedly once again, there's no reason to be compelling others around you, especially children, I might add, to do the same. Furthermore, there's been no indication that any district in the metro has returned to masks because of COVID, contrary to Ms. Page's comments on Shawnee Mission and Piper Schools at the last meeting. The cited KCUR article on the former stated explicitly that it was unclear if any of the absentees triggering their 5% threshold had been diagnosed with COVID. Read the article, Ms. Page. And calls to Piper's district office revealed they have not gone back to mask and have no intentions to do so. In addition to inciting baseless fear with false claims and extreme rhetoric, Ms. Page deserves serious reproach for irresponsibly implying that KCK teachers should not show up to classrooms under a mask optional policy. Go back and watch the tape.
No.
On the other hand, a sensible suggestion came from Ms. Russell for a survey following her bizarrely accusatory initial reaction. Her explicit intent to vote with the majority of respondents offers encouragement for the board's direction, as survey results reveal that the majority want masks to remain optional. The silent majority in our community has now been heard, and now students need to hear unequivocally, they're not doing anything wrong or harming others or being selfish by taking masks off their faces.
You're at time, sir.
Please be an encouraging voice as they're finally pivoting towards health and restoration, and vote to ensure masks remain optional as they could have been from the beginning. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sumi. Please, let's make sure that we have Mr. Sumi sign into the role as well. Thank you. We will continue with our board agenda. Next on our agenda are board reports, and I would invite Ms. Lenora Miller to, who will give an introductory boundary concept for the board.
Ms. Miller cannot be with us here tonight, so Dr. Turan and myself will do the introduction. But we do have Rob Swartz with RSP here tonight to share the information and the two options to the board based off the board's charge from the, putting together the boundary committee to look at phase one of addressing some of the overstaffing at our elementaries primarily for the next school year, but we also have an option on the table that includes addressing one of our middle schools. So I'll turn it over to Rob.
Great. Good evening, board, and Dr. Stubblefield.
Good evening.
Do we have the full presentation here?
Yeah, it's on there now, I believe. Is that it?
It looks like I'm, there we go. That's what I want. All right, outstanding. So I'm going to give you an update of where we are in the process and what the recommendation is. So if you go back in time, you will know that there were some things that we outlined with you, the board, some objectives you gave us as far as what to look at for when we need to do some boundary changes. And one of the lasting elements was, when would that happen? Is it as early as the 22, 23 school year, or is it sometime later? So what I'm going to talk with you this evening, so that we're all on the same page, is the process overview, and then the recommended concepts, and then there's appendix items that you, as a board or the community, can look at to understand how we got to this recommendation. So you're very familiar with RSP. We've been doing a lot of work in your district. Also with me is one of our planners, Jenna Wallace. She did a lot of the scenario planning, map creation, and whatnot, but she missed the last meeting, so I get to present. She gets to watch. So we had this process. So we started back in December of 2021, and that was when we met with you, the board, and we talked about criteria, the guiding principles, where we were at with enrollments and what that might mean over the next five years. We've had three different committee meetings that began on February 24th, March 10th, and March 24th, and then we had some public inputs on April 4th and April 13th. We rescheduled April 4th to April 13th because there was not as good a communication with people knowing about that meeting. And then here we are on April 26th. So that was the process. There's different things that each entity had to work with on what they were responsible for. We continually reminded everyone there wrapped around this process is this ACE concept. So we had to be familiar with academics, the culture, and economics as we make some of these proposed changes, as we investigate what this could mean. We have these guiding principles that you, the board, helped us understand, and we're going to read off these five bullet points, because this kind of was the sandbox that we were working with. So focus on any change in schools where the number of students exceeds the building capacity. We had two buildings where we know that is the case now, and we had one building later, like in '24, '25. Second point was attendance area changes could be recommended for either '22, '23 school year or beyond, depends on what was the situation. You wanted to disrupt the fewest number of students, and we wanted to desire for any elementary attendance area change to keep students in that same middle school and high school feeder. That might mean they would have to change their middle school, high school feeder. We'll talk about that. We also had for our last bullet point, understand the changes to the middle school feeder might create an elementary to middle school break, trying to avoid that if possible. We can't when we get into some of the capacity numbers, and I'll explain that. We had boundary criteria that we worked with you back at that December board meeting, I believe, where we, you helped us understand what you were thinking as far as prioritization. We also had a survey that went out to the public, and back in December, you voted for trying to keep neighborhoods intact, minimize the number of students that are impacted by the boundary change, and try to have contiguous attendance areas, so compact, things that would make sense as we started to look at transportation. So I mentioned that we had a public survey. We had over 80 responses, and again, we focused on the district communicating with the areas where we knew there would potentially be an impact. So this is, I'm really trying to be focused on those particular schools. And so we have different results here that you can look at. The one I wanted to focus on was as they were looking at what they felt would be important in the prioritization of a boundary. Their number one was to balance enrollments. Of course, minimize students that are impacted by the boundary change was number two, and the transportation considerations was number three. Then you can see how the other ones play out with that. When we had the public input, we had a survey that also opened up. We had two different concepts that were kind of going in a little bit different direction on what a solution could look like. We've provided you with those concepts, what their strengths were, what their concerns were for each of those concepts. That was very valuable, because that led us to being able to fully understand what I'm going to be presenting to you in a moment was what is a good recommendation for some of our challenges. So our objectives, our situation and solution revolved around, our focus is on the elementary and middle schools that are exceeding their building capacity now or sometime next year or the following year. And so as we look at this, Wellborn Elementary in '21, '22 is beyond their reside and attend enrollment. Take a moment. So one of the things, if you go back to our enrollment forecast, we look at enrollment based on where students reside and how that relates to their existing attendance area, and then we know where students attend based on a whole host of different things. Could be programs, could be things with babysitting transfers, whatever that might be. So we know where students are based on their address and then where they actually attend. Our focus has always been on reside, having neighborhood boundaries. So Wellborn Elementary is over on both the reside and attends. New Chelsea Elementary, it gets beyond its reside enrollments in '24, '25, but when we look at the balance of students with choice that may be made with programs and where students are going, the attend enrollment is not over that building capacity. Carl Bruce Middle School, we have overcapacity challenges in that building from '21, '22 through '25, '26 with the attend, but for the reside enrollment, '21, '22 through '26, '27. And that was our focus, was the reside, but then also saying, hey, if there's attend, does some of this take place? Fixes itself, so to speak, just naturally through what's happening with enrollment in those boundaries. We know that with Carl Bruce, the enrollment will likely decrease next year, but it will still be over its capacity. So our recommended concept solution was to really focus on two buildings. Wellborn Elementary, because it would continue to be over its capacity, and so we're recommending a change for the '22, '23 school year. New Chelsea, because it doesn't get beyond its capacity in '22, '23. It's not really till '25, '26. We're saying wait and see. Let's not make a change for something that we currently don't have a situation or in '22, '23. Carl Bruce, because the building capacity will be exceeded, we're recommending a change for Carl Bruce to begin in the '22, '23 school year. So that's our recommended. As we move through, what I want you to understand is this was kind of a collective move of how did we get to this recommended concept? So I mentioned we had concept one and concept two. The recommended concept, initially, we were talking about it as a hybrid concept, because there were certain things that were liked about concept one and certain things about concept two, but when we took New Chelsea off the conversation, and a lot of New Chelsea in the conversation was, if we were to move New Chelsea, portions of it somewhere, we maybe would have the opportunity to help Carl Bruce Middle School's capacity by also then aligning them in a different middle school boundary. This became a challenge. So I'm kind of going off script. You can look at these bullet points. What we started to realize with where students were located and our building capacities, and even thinking about stuff as it related back to the 15, 16 master plan, there's some things that we have to look at maybe a little bit differently moving forward with some of the trends. As we started to examine, where can we move students from Carl Bruce? We have Gloria Willis basically full. When we started to then look, well, as you move to the next nearest middle school for Carl Bruce, that's Central Middle School. We've had a lot of conversation about what happens with Central Middle School. Does it eventually have become a new building, or is it significantly renovated? Is it in a different location? A lot of different things. So we know that we can't move a whole lot of kids to Carl Bruce. When we started to look at things related to, I think board members mentioned, balance of students, even though it wasn't on our criteria, balance of certain students, let's say, that would be in apartments versus single family, specifically when we were looking at New Chelsea, south of State Street. If we moved all of that, let's say, over to Mark Twain or down to Francis Willard, which, depending on which concept, one or two, we were looking at that, because we could accommodate enrollments to certain levels in each of those buildings. Once we took New Chelsea off, the focus then went back to Wellborn. And as we looked at Wellborn, we thought it was better for students if we kept them in their existing feeder. And so this is where we started to see that there could be a movement of students from Kennedy over to Lowell Broon if students from Wellborn were moved over into Kennedy. So there's a little bit of a shift there. Typically, we try to minimize or reduce that, but in order to get the right number of students where Wellborn would be in this target, because we're trying to target 90 to 95% in those buildings to give flexibility for how you staff, if, let's say, there's a larger class that comes in, we'd have space for those students. We also were focusing on transportation, and if we kept them in the same feeder, knowing that there's some larger decisions that we get into like phase two or phase three, what are we going to do with different buildings? Is there some of this combination of elementary buildings? If you go back to that plan, where we build a new building and two buildings become one, how does that then start to impact? So with Wellborn Elementary, keeping them in the same feeder was felt to be a good decision when we looked at the differences between concept one and two. Then when we got to the middle school with Carl Bruce, it was really a difficult situation, because we have a lot more middle school capacity at Argentine and Rosedale, but we have some other decisions down there that we yet have to explore that get into, how do we look at building utilization? What does our inventory look like? How do we assign students and whatnot? When we talked about transportation, it became central. If we can move some students out of Carl Bruce to Central, we'd have the ability to make it a better situation at Carl Bruce and bring the utilization up to Central, but we also were cognizant of. But we also were cognizant of conversation, comments that were made about Central being an older building. We really wanna keep them below ninety-five percent, more in the ninety percent perspective. So that kinda limited how far we could actually accommodate making change from Carl Bruce to one of the other middle schools. So when we started to look at some of the data sets, this slide shows you what the current situation is for the targeted buildings when we were looking at Concept One and Two with the current situation. What we were focusing on is really the orange area where we're overcapacity. And so you can see Wellborn, we look at those five columns to the right, we're ranging from a hundred seven to a hundred ten percent over its capacity. So a hundred percent being we're full, we're beyond that. We look down at Carl Bruce, and you can see we start to decrease, but we're still gonna be over that capacity. That's the current situation. And that's kinda what I tried to explain as we're looking at where students are, the capacities of the buildings. On this table, you can see that target capacity that's been defined by the district for each of these buildings. That's the row right, to the right of each of the buildings. And then with the concept that we're recommended to you this evening for this first read, I've put a yellow circle that generally describes the area that's moving. So on these maps, the solid line, actually, it's kinda like a dotted line to a certain extent, that's the existing boundary. The solid color represents what changes would be occurring. So this area along the Fifty-Ninth Street spine in west that's in Wellborn, that moves over to John Kennedy. And then we have this area south of Parallel Parkway where the second circle is, and that moves to Lowell Brun. And so we kinda just generally list it, current students, there's about sixty students in this Wellborn area, and there's between ninety and a hundred five students down in this area south of Parallel Parkway that would be going over to Lowell Brun. Ideally, we wanted to just move the sixty kids over to Kennedy and call it good. But if you go back to the table, can't do that. And we put them at that ninety-five to a hundred percent. So then the conversation that occurred in the committee and then with the public inputs was how do we start to make this move? And it's really challenging, because where the buildings are located. But Lowell Brun's a new building, right? So beautiful building. We have capacity there for more students to be there. This accommodates all that. And I'll show you those numbers here on the next slide after the middle school. Then when we look at the middle school boundary, where we've zoomed in a little bit tighter to this area, we basically, on the area that's highlighted by this yellow circle, we've moved from Carl Bruce down to Central. And we'll show what that impact is. But basically, it's about forty-five to seventy elementary students that we would see there over the next five years. So when we look at this recommended concept, what stands out for the elementaries, you can see all of the buildings get below a hundred percent. Wellborn, we're just under. When you go out to twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're ninety-nine point five. The conversation that we had was how close do you get to Wellborn? So as we go from Fifty-Ninth over to Fifty-Fifth, you're right by that building. So we really tried to say that was really as close as we wanted to get to that building to move further to the west. But we get below the hundred percent utilization. So we make it better for the experience in Wellborn. We go down to Carl Bruce, you can see there's still some years that even when we implement this change, they'll be above a hundred percent. This became that conundrum where I was telling you, how many kids do we move down into Central? And you can see that we're right up at that ninety-five percent utilization when we're in twenty-five, twenty-six. So short of moving kids even farther south to Argentine and Rosedale, which didn't seem to have any traction from anyone if you brought that conversation up, that makes sense. You wanna be close to those buildings, right? So we make the situation better at Carl Bruce, but we don't fully achieve what we wanted to do as a board. This became kind of this hybrid, or what we're calling this recommended option. We make the situations better at both Wellborn and Carl Bruce, having too many kids. We bring more kids into Central, and we adjust some of the enrollment where the newer building, Lowell Brun, gets more students. We did look at the students that would be impacted by the boundary change. So these tables illustrate the current students. So in elementary, K through four, that with this boundary change, as first through fifth graders, they would be in a different building. There's different ways we can look at how students are impacted. Here, we were saying, you're physically in that building now. How are you gonna change? Obviously, if you are a sibling of, let's say, a second grader that's coming into kindergarten, you're potentially impacted, but you're not physically in the building. So we have a hundred thirty-two students that are impacted. Where eighty-three kids go from Kennedy to Lowell Brun, and forty-nine Kennedy, forty-nine students go from Wellborn into Kennedy. So that movement to be able to make sure we're under the capacity of the buildings. At the middle school, we have fifty-two students that are impacted. So those are existing sixth and seventh graders, that is, seventh and eighth graders. They would be going to a different building. If you said, this is the boundary, here's what needs to happen. Here, we're showing you what that feeder looks like. So as you take these maps and you understand how students move from the elementary to the middle school. So you can see we have maintaining a complete elementary to middle school for Kennedy, Lowell Brun, and Wellborn as they go to Eisenhower and then on into Washington. But Douglas, because a portion of that existing elementary building is now gonna be at Carl Bruce and Central. And I think if you go back in time, some of this area was originally in Central. So as you look at some of the cycles of how students have moved through in different areas of your district, we start to experience maybe some things that were more similar in the past than what maybe we initially knew going into this process. Here's all the different reasons that as we listen through the surveys, what we heard at the committee meetings, that we felt would be benefits. So you can read over these. I've mentioned most of this through my delivery of what I'm presenting to you this evening. The other thing is, again, how we looked at this with your rank boundary criteria, and we've been able to address those points. Again, we would love to have Carl Bruce lower, but we would have to do something even more drastic that probably would not be at all popular, even if these changes probably aren't gonna be popular if you're impacted as well, right? That's why I'll stop, listen to board comments. If I can answer other questions, because you may have been thinking, looking at these maps. I mean, there were certain persons, board members, you were at some of these meetings. And so we had some really good one-on-one conversation. But questions, comments, I know this is the first read, if I'm not mistaken. So thoughts on what we've presented to you this evening?
Great. Thanks so much, Rob, for the information and the analysis. Board members, any questions for Rob while he's here? Any thoughts?
I don't have any questions. Just want to thank you for your expertise in putting all of this together so that we can look at it, analyze it, and then come up with a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions? So I guess maybe next steps. What happens next?
I believe this goes to a second read at the next meeting. And then it's implementation for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just do one shout-out to Lenora and Ralph. Thank you for your work with us on this. It was very helpful.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, I would invite Mr. Doug Clements to give us a report, give the board a report on our capital improvement plan.
As Doug and Brad are coming forward, I just wanna give a little background to the board regarding the capital improvement plan. I requested, as I have been transitioning this year, for the, this department to provide a multi-year capital improvement plan. So what I will start with is this plan is fluid. And the meaning that although it's three years out, every year we'll bring it back with an additional year or prior to that. And then any thing that we need to update or add, the board can always do that at any point. Our hope is that by sharing this, we'll also be able to have it available on our website for all of the community to see what is upcoming. And as we updated or the board make changes, we would update on the website. So both the board and the community and stakeholders can see, like, the long-term planning and what's coming up and/or at any time provide input to staff or the board about things that we should take into consideration. So I'll turn it over to Brad.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lopez, and board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all again. And we are here to speak with you tonight about a project that the facilities team and finance team have been working on for some time now. You may have heard of a capital improvement plan in the past. I know probably the spotlight was on it much more before the bond projects really started to take the lead and our reports to the board. There has always been a capital improvement plan. It's just a little bit more simplified version of this. But we felt as the bond projects are wrapping up, it was really time to put the focus more on this and really utilizing that recurring revenue that we have into capital outlay the best that we can in a more comprehensive, long-term plan. So a lot of collaborative work has gone into this with our stakeholders involved too, reporting what needs their buildings may have, leadership at the district level, and then our departments involved as well. So I'm gonna start out with just a little bit of information about the capital outlay fund in general. And then the second half of the presentation really gets into the actual work that needs to be done. And Doug is much more well-versed in the terminology of those different types of projects. I'll let him take over at that point and describe a little bit of what we have in store. So a little bit of information about the capital improvement plan. This is an overview of school facility maintenance and renovation. It does also include the purchase of other long-term assets, though. And you'll see that later in the, kind of the spreadsheet plan in the second half, that things like large purchases of school buses or technology may be included in there as well. So it's not just maintenance or building new buildings. It involves those long-term assets as well. Now, a few things that we consider as this plan is designed. Safety and security is a top priority. Educational effectiveness, operational efficiency. Equity plays a big role in this. We want all of our buildings to benefit as equally as possible. So we're really looking at a system-wide approach instead of just one building at a time and individual needs. And then obviously, the availability of resources and what our actual revenues are as those change year to year. This plan actually covers four years. I apologize, there was some technical difficulties today. This PowerPoint reverted to a previous version, so that's a typo that I'll fix. But it starts with the fiscal year twenty-three and then goes out for three additional years after that. As Dr. Stubblefield pointed out, the capital improvement plan is a living document. So we cannot predict every possible facility's need that we might have. So there will be changes for unforeseen needs. We may have to adjust priorities as things come up. But this is based on the facilities department's expertise and the condition of our buildings. It's their best plan right now for what we can expect. Another thing to keep in mind as it comes to the timing, as far as when expenses happen, and you'll see in some of the expenses over years and income over years, so many of these projects have to happen over the summer when students aren't in the buildings. So when an expense is realized, whether it's in June or July and August, can change between years just based on the bidding process, availability of contractors to do work, availability of our own staff. So several things play into that. And then one more thing to keep in mind is that although this is a plan that facilities and finance is putting in front of you with input from all of the other stakeholders, the board is not cut out in any way from this process. We want to get your input as we go. And then also, ultimately, any project that we bring to you over twenty thousand dollars has to get board approval in advance anyway. So nothing will be a surprise to you, hopefully, ever, as we complete projects or cross them off of this list. So an overview of the budget. So what are some allowable revenues for the capital outlay fund? Kansas statutes actually tell us what money can or cannot be put into the capital outlay fund. So the main sources are our local property taxes. And then we get state aid as a percentage of that on top. We also can place any interest earned on idle funds into that capital outlay fund as well as any reimbursements from prior years or other miscellaneous revenues. And then finally, the board does have the option, just as you could move general fund money into the contingency reserve fund, you can also move it into capital outlay. This is a graphic from KSDE, kinda covering in just a little bit more detail some of those other property taxes, vehicles, et cetera, that go into capital outlay. The mill levy has fluctuated over the years. In the distant past, I just went back ten years to kinda see a little ways back. It would change year to year based on the needs of the district. In twenty-fourteen, though, the board adopted a continuing resolution to collect up to eight mills for the capital outlay fund. So that continues from twenty-fourteen on to this day, or, excuse me, the twenty-fifteen fiscal year. And you can see how that revenue has been affected over the years, ups and downs as valuations increase or decrease. We're not just looking at house prices or valuations in this. It includes vehicles and other things. So that's why from year to year, you may see a decrease. And then you can finally see what we are estimating for our revenue from the mill levy this year, fiscal year twenty-two, there at the bottom. The state aid that we receive on top of the mill rate that we collect locally. Currently, we are reimbursed seventy-three percent of the local tax received. This changes year to year, and it's different in every district based on a number of economic factors. So property evaluations and free and reduced lunch percentages, things like that. Really, the goal there with the state aid is to help level the playing field a little bit between the districts with much higher valuations than we have. Here are some examples of allowable expenditures, so what we can spend capital outlay funds on. I won't go through all of them, but some of the common ones, again, I mentioned buses. Boilers and HVAC are common, large-ticket items that would come out of here. Musical instruments, some years we've chosen, or the board has, to help our equipment needs there. Really, the short version of it is, though, that this is for long-term assets or building improvements, not things that would be considered supplies. Some examples of ineligible expenses. Again, these are some of those smaller things, toiletries, textbooks, DVDs and other types of small instructional items. Those things, cleaning supplies is a common one that we get asked if we could use capital outlay for, and because it's related to facilities and custodial services. But unfortunately, we can't use that. So what is the difference between a supply and equipment? A supply is something that is consumed or instead of repairing it, you would most likely replace it if it was damaged. So again, consumables, those things like cleaning supplies, things that would be replaced instead of repaired, I think of in terms of computer hardware sometimes. So we would repair a broken laptop, because that is an equipment item, and it can be purchased with capital outlay. We would not purchase a keyboard for a desktop computer out of capital outlay, because that's something that is low enough cost that it would be replaced instead of repaired. Other things that would meet the needs or meet the criteria for equipment, it's... Oh, there, sorry, I lost my place. Represents and... oh, there, sorry, I lost my place, represents an investment of money which makes it feasible and advisable to capitalize the item. So again, these things are equipment that we would keep usually more than five years at least. And it's something that would be asset-tagged and tracked by the district long-term. Capital outlay expenditures, you can see a few years of history here, and there are some large ups and downs there. I'll just remind the board that through this period, we were heavily involved in many of the bond projects. So there may have been some years where we spent, for example, 2020, you'll see a large number of expenses there, $19.4 million. That actually, $5 million was reimbursed from the bond there. So that number was actually around $14.4 million for that year. Right now, based on where we're at for the year, we're looking at approximately $11.3 million estimated for expenses for this year. But of course, that can always change as those unforeseen needs come up. I wanted to include a little bit more comprehensive, just what does the cash balance in the capital outlay fund look like over the years? So you'll notice based on the mill levy and the state aid that I showed you in previous slides, there's additional cash receipts in that column above those totals. That's that miscellaneous revenue that we spoke about before. So again, interest that we can earn on idle funds, which interest rates have been very low the last couple of years. So that's part of why cash receipts have not jumped very much or stayed pretty flat anyway over the last couple of years. But those interest rates are starting to increase. So hopefully, we can get some decent revenue again coming in extra to the fund through that. And then you can see those encumbrances. So that is any of the planned projects that we have open POs for as of June 30th, the end of the fiscal year, that carry in and become actual expenses in the following year. And then lastly, what the unencumbered cash balance is and how that's been affected over the years there. Now on to the actual capital improvement plan. So a few things before we get to the actual projects that Doug will speak on a little bit. Just a reminder that these can and will change as new funding packages, such as in the last year and a half, we were surprised to get ESER funds that the district desperately needed that we can put towards some of these projects. So you will see a slide that talks about a few that used to be on the capital improvement plan for capital outlay expenditures that were moved to ESER because they met the requirements of that grant. And then as the district thinks about bond projects, past or future, that affects our capital outlay plan as well. And then just a reminder that none of these are set in stone. Every project over $20,000 comes before the board for final approval, and that's in your board policies listed there. Now I will turn it over to Doug, and he can walk us through some of these projects.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, President Lopez and Boards. Good to see you all. Really, I just wanted to talk very briefly about the projects that you see here are sort of anticipated based on the work that we typically would do in any given year, particularly over the summer. In years past, I would present a one-year-by-year plan like this. So we've stretched that out over a period of four years, which I feel like we can reasonably anticipate. Once we start to get out to 10 years, it's a little difficult. We're more guessing than we might want to do. So that's what you see here. If you had any particular questions on any of these particular projects, I know it's kind of small, a little hard to read maybe, but I'd be happy to answer any of those questions and go over how some of those things are on the list or what's not on the list.
Question. When it comes to swimming pools, how often do you work on them, fix them? Because I was told that thunder is up the park. People are swimming in the pool.
Well, I can't say they're swimming in the pool, but they certainly can. Yeah, I mean, it's, it, there may be a little bit of, I know there's a question about it leaks, and there may be a little bit of a trickle. When we were out there, I did have a consultant come out, and they said, really, we didn't need to do anything to it at this time. I know Washington is on there. Washington, it's built a little different, has little teeny-tiny one-inch square tiles, and they're coming up. And I think really, since that's our only competitive pool, I put that on here to do a really not kind of an epoxy-type resurfacing of that to give it a good, clean look and to not leak.
So how often would they repair? Would you say that when it comes to the pools?
You know, something like that, really, I don't have a real good answer for it. It's kind of on an as-needed basis, because right now, the pools are all functioning. We did go through several years ago and replaced the mechanical equipment of those pools. So we should be good for beyond the four-year plan. But at some point, we would have to look at that, and maybe in years six, seven, eight. Now we got to look at and say, no, no, these things are, you know, 10, 15 years old. We want to look at maybe replacing those.
And then I can't think of the gentleman who won the employee of the month award.
Oh, Kurt?
At Bertram Carruthers, they're dealing with how to dismiss in the flow of traffic.
And I apologize.
I didn't know if you were going to put that on there because he made several recommendations of things that they could do to better be able to dismiss and not have that traffic flow.
Right. You know, honestly, no, I haven't put that on here. Once we get some idea of what that might be, that could either probably come out of either a general fund or annual that we put on for that, depending on what the cost might be. Or we may have to come back and adjust some of these other items and say, this is going to be a higher priority. It's all based on what we and the board places as a high-priority item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. I don't know if this has ever been looked at, and so take my limited knowledge as what it is. Washington High School, I noticed that every time we get rain, I'm going to describe, there's a garage that goes-
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, all right, perfect. It concerns me. I see a lot of staff having to spend a lot of time there, students having to spend a lot of time there as well. So have we ever looked at maybe an underground drain or anything there?
There is an underground drain. And let me explain that just a little bit, you know. And I will say that that flooded four or five years ago, and I don't recall it happening again. And now all of a sudden, it's happened three times in the last week and a half, two weeks. So actually, I've had our plumbers go out and they water-jetted those drains. There is a, there's a storm drain that runs down the middle of that parking lot, and then there's a drain down there that feeds into that. So they did that. We thought we had it taken care of. Obviously, since it still happens, just today, as a matter of fact, we had another company come out with a bigger machine, scope, and they looked at it and actually found that that main drain was plugged.
Okay.
So I'm hoping we have that taken care of. I won't promise it, but I think that, and we're looking at other things that we might do. If you look at that parking lot, everything tends to drain to that ramp that goes down to the classroom.
Exactly.
So we need to look at maybe some re-engineering at some point.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Ms. Russell has a question. Ms. Russell?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation and all of the work that you have done. Just a couple of considerations that I would have would be playground equipment. I know that a lot of that was covered by the bond, but the replacement and the continued additions for those functions within our school system, I think is important to be a part of this. We don't want to wait till, have to wait till something's broken, and maybe there's another place where you are doing that maintenance equipment stuff at. But I think this would be a great place for that as well. Additionally, in the theater and athletic column of this, most of the items that I'm seeing are related to athletics. And I want to make sure that we are equitably reaching our theater and art students. And so I wondered what adding the upgrade or the improvement of the sound systems in our theater spaces with across all levels. I, off the top of my mind, I think about Arrowhead and the play that they had and how it was a great performance, but it was very hard for families to hear or to be engaged because of the sound system. And so just thinking about those pieces as it relates to theater and art. And then lastly, I brought it up in an email today, but I just want to let the entire board know, I'm also very interested in the procurement of additional passenger vans for student transportation. So those are the three things that I'm kind of thinking about that may be potential additions to this or areas where if you have more expertise to share, I'd love to hear it. So thank you again.
Thank you. The only, the only response or input, I might say, you're right, we did an awful lot of playground, I shouldn't say it that way, awful lot. It was a good thing. We did a lot of really great playground updates through the bond. And so that would be one of those things that I think we need to look at that, probably again, beyond the four-year. You know, you can think that, okay, at some point, probably 10 years down the road, we're going to have to come back around and look at those again. And there may be some issues that we might deal with on a year-by-year basis. Again, I would probably think any kind of repair or even a single system might be an annual general expense-type fund that we could take care of from a maintenance standpoint. Theater upgrades, again, that would be really the desire of the board, and if that's a priority item. And I know several years ago, I don't want to misspeak. Time flies, doesn't it? Probably seven years ago, we did upgrade all of the sound systems and lighting systems in the high schools, but I do not think that we really addressed the middle school. So that might be something we might want to look at again to start thinking about putting it on a future capital list.
Ms. Clark?
Can I ask one more question? Because I'm also looking here, and we're talking about the repairs that need to happen to our softball fields, I think is how it's called out.
Yeah.
There was some lighting, lighting that was, that we took care of last year, but I think, I don't know if lights are included in this or if everything was covered there. The schools I'm thinking about are like, Wyandotte comes to mind for me for our baseball field.
Exterior?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, most of our fields, and I think, and I don't want to speak for her, she, I don't know that she's here, she may be online, the athletic director, you know, those fields are practice fields typically. I know at Wyandotte, they do play some, some games there. But yeah, that's why that really hasn't come up as a discussion to add lights to those.
And you probably don't know the answer because there were games there last year. Maybe they got moved to practice fields because of the lights. That's an assumption. I don't know the answer, but-
And I do think they're still playing at Wyandotte now, but I know the plan is to, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to, I was just wanted to get clarity on the repairs that were happening there.
And I asked the question earlier, but I'm just asking it again. I think it's Arrowhead, is it Arrowhead where the gym in the roof?
Carl Bruce, I believe.
No, it wasn't Carl Bruce, unless that's an additional one.
Gloria Willis?
Yeah.
Gloria Willis, I'm sorry.
That is, that would not be a capital plan. Frankly, that's something that we're talking with the construction manager at risk and the supplier of those materials. I'll have you having a meeting with them again on Thursday. That's currently under assessment right now to figure out what is needed there.
Other questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you, Brad, and thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
This time, we're going to take a quick seven-minute break. So we will take a break at 6:00 now, and we'll be back in seven minutes. Thank you. Thank you.[223.43]
The ad in the local, in the record, the record news, and Tuomas Two, I believe.
So is the record the only form of pet print media that you use?
No, Tuomas Two, it's a Spanish language paper that's here locally.
And what about the call?
The call, um, I'll have to check with Brian Hernandez, he's running this, but I'm, I'm pretty sure he let all of the uh, local chambers of commerce also know that the bid was open and available.
Okay, other questions? Thank you.
The next item is the ex, we're asking the board accept as information item for solicitation for bids for the produce vendor for the first semester of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year for nutritional, the nutritional service department as submitted by Wayne Correll, Dr. Ralph Turan, and myself.
Any questions from the board?
Hey Wayne, I just have one question and apologize that it's coming late at you. Um, I guess my question is, why is this a first semester versus an entire year? And maybe that's something my newbie self just missed and doesn't understand, but if you could answer that for me, I greatly appreciate it.
Well, you know, it was based on Josh Mathis Meyer, uh, and he has left the district, but he has always bid those by semester. And so.
Is it more competitive or do we get a better bang for our buck if we do a full year? I know Lenora is not here either to be able, but I would be interested in entertaining a full year bid as we do with all the rest of our nutritional service.
Hi Rachel, I'm here.
Oh, thanks.
I'm on Zoom, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to use my camera. Um, this, that fall and spring bids are related directly to product as well. So what's available at the time, that's why we split it into two.
Totally understand, and that makes a lot of sense. Um, and thank you for being here, I'm also not able to be on camera, so I understand. Um, but I appreciate that, so you're saying what's it, the summer vegetables are available in the spring and like winter stuff is available, and that's why there's, I, I just want to be sure that I'm clear, I understand.
You are on the, you are spot on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you, additional questions? Okay.
The next item is the board accept as an informational item for the solicitation of bids for dairy, the dairy bit vendor for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year for um, the nutritional service department as submitted by Wayne, Dr. Turan, and myself.
Any questions from the board? See none, thank you.
The final item is that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item the solicitation of bids for a dish, dish machine at Sumner Academy, um, that from nutrition, the nutritional service department as submitted by Wayne Correll, Dr. Ralph Turan, and um, myself.
Questions from the board? See none, all right. Thank you Wayne and team for the information, um, board again, these will come back in front of the board at a later date. Next on our agenda, item number ten is up for board discussion. Um, at the previous board meeting, we had discussed having a survey regarding our mask policy um, and mask requirement of our student staff and anyone on district premises. Um, the survey has been out and um, tonight we will hear those results as well as additional information and then open up for board, for board discussion.
Um, I, I was just checking to see is uh, Ms. Lewis is online or is she coming up here? Just one second, oh, okay. So um, Ms. Lewis will present um, the first part of the presentation regarding our current status and um, additional other health information, and then I'll share the information regarding um, the survey results from thought exchange. So while she's pulling that up, um, we'll just give her a few minutes to do that.
Sorry, I'm out of breath, good, good afternoon, Board President Lopez, Vice President Clark, board members, and Dr. Stubblefield. This is our current masking policy that we have in place where employees and students are required to wear their mask indoors and on school district property, if they are in solitary enclosed spaces such as individual offices, they can unmask. And they must be well fitting, cover the nose and mouth, and not, and not be removing when speaking. Typically, what we have in the past done is we've looked at the UG's levels, the community levels by the CDC and the state of Kansas. That is how we've come to decide as a district if we will be masking or not. I have provided the links for you all here so that you can see that data. The state last updated on the twenty-second, the CDC updates every Thursday, and the UG is figuring it out as data comes in, they, they try to do it once a week. Right now, this is, there's a, we have a new slide for the seventeenth, but we are still in Yellwas Wyandotte County. And it was updated as of April twenty-second. Um, according to the KDHE, you know, our cases have gone down a little bit, it's only a hundred and ninety-six for the state. As you can see, most of the state is in the low range. For Wyandotte County, the CDC community level is low. Um, about a week ago, this number was double digit, is down to seven point seven, and the inpatient beds are two point four. On the call with KU today, they only have a total of twenty-five individuals in the hospital, six with new cases, and the rest nineteen have been there for months, so no real new changes.
So Ms. Lewis, if you can advance the slides for me, that would be great. Um, so um, based off board recommendation, we did um, just send out the survey or thought exchange regarding um, the question we asked was should the district, should the board continue with the current policy requiring mask? And um, can you go back one slide, Ms. Lewis? Um, so the total number of participants was five thousand and forty-four. Um, of those five thousand and forty-four, several people shared thoughts around it, and the star just means that there were ninety-three thousand uh, different ratings for the various thoughts. People could submit more than one thought, it doesn't mean that everybody who answered submitted a thought. You can go to the next slide. Um, the breakdown of the participants, forty percent or one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two said yes, the board should continue with the current policy requiring mask, fifty percent, two thousand four hundred and eighty-one said no, and ten percent, four hundred and eighty-five were unsure. Of that participation breakdown, forty-one percent identified themselves as a parent or guardian, fifty percent identified themselves as KCKP as staff, and eleven percent uh, were both a parent and a staff member. And um, this breakdown lets you know, when you looked at who said yes or who said no, whether they were a parent or, or guardian, um, the majority of the parents who participated, one thousand one hundred and thirteen said yes, that the board um, should continue the mask uh, policy requirement, and um, majority of the staff said no of those who participated that identified as staff members, and those who identified as both parents and staff, majority of those individuals said yes, that the board should continue with the policy. Um, I did not, you can go to the next slide, I did not include all of the thoughts because there were several, but um, one of the things that this tool allows it, it'll show like the most popular thoughts or the ones that were most common. And this different slide, because I think that's important, um, when we're looking at this, like what's important to those who said yes versus those that no, um, and where they pulled out was that um, of those who said yes, um, they identified some common things in early childhood, children take off their uh, mask for meals and recess, and I'm vaccinated, should be able to choose to wear masks. So based off those who said yes or no, they both commonly rated these two thoughts as high uh, regarding like, they agree even though they believe the board should continue with the mask or stop it, that these are some common things that um, were important to both sides. The next slide also um, shows that um, some more common thoughts between those who said no versus yes, they um, rated the, these two high on both sides, I'm in favor of masks being optional for both staff and students, um, and it gives the rationale why, and then the second thoughts, the masks are inhibiting our students' ability to learn to read, and they should be optional. So regardless of how they felt individually, those were some common thoughts around, um, that were rated high. So what we have um, for you today, and Ms. Lewis can chime in, um, is two options based off of what our current practice is and um, what we heard from health officials, um, we did consult with both local health officials and state health officials, and um, both of them basically said any decision, they didn't have a recommendation for us to put before the board, but they, the both entities said that um, if the board does move away from requiring masks, that there should be a way to go back if cases go up. So the first option that we put, uh, we put before you based off that feedback, um, actually Ms. Lewis um, put it together, and I just gave some feedback based off of wording and things was currently the board, um, uh, what the board had done previously was follow the most conservative recommendation from KDHD, UG, and or the CDC. Um, we were faced with that dilemma for the first time a few weeks ago when KDHE had us in yellow and the CDC had us in high, the board's um, action at that point was to follow the most conservative. And that is something that, that's an option for the board to continue. Um, and then the second option um, that's here, um, is on option two is follow um, the local status of the three with the threshold to return to mask. If any um, one building or location were to exceed the five percent threshold, um, they will return to masking. And this um, this one addresses like if masks are optional, having a way to return. And um, honestly, it follows um, some of the protocol of other districts, which when we consulted with health officials, they um, also shared those options as well. Those are the two options that we are bringing forward. Um, if the board has a different iteration of that or would choose to do something different, that would be at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis and Dr. Stubblefield, I'll open the floor for questions or thoughts, comments from the board.
I do have one question, on option two, um, and I'm just thinking about other districts. If we were to move with option two, should the word COVID be there or should it just be um, thinking about just illness or?
So because we were specifically, the mask mandate was put in place because of COVID, we put COVID in there. If you um, wanted to expand it beyond COVID, that would be um, at the direction of the board. We just were dealing with COVID.
Just the question is over, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yeah, before I ask the question, I'm gonna make a statement, because the gentleman who spoke during the community comment, he has every right to his opinion, and we could debate all night, because I could give data, he gave data, we don't agree, he misquoted me, that's okay, because all I've ever tried to do since we started this was to make sure that we look at public health and keep everyone safe. And if I'm guilty for that, I'm guilty, because that has been my fight, to make sure these kids are safe, our teachers are safe, all our staff, and everyone who comes in and out of our school. This is not to say that others have not been on that journey, but that's my fight, because that's important. And I didn't base it on what I thought, I based it on whatever data that we had available. So I want to make that clear, and that's for him. Now, my questions are this, if we choose option two, how do we collect the data? How do we know, because the biggest problem from what I've seen has not been the kids getting the data, how do we get it from our adults who are employed by us? How do we collect that information and make sure that it's accurate? And is there, is all that in place? Because you're asking us to choose a plan, but what's, what tools are we going to use to collect the data? And how is the data being calculated? Because there has to be a formula to calculate, how are we going to do this? And you're talking about a five percent threshold, how do you determine that? Because we have these entities, you have your UG, CDC, and the state, and they all do some things a little differently. If I'm wrong, correct me, because I know there's somebody out there who will, but they do determine the data differently. How are we going to do it? How do we collect the data? And how do we make sure that people are following and doing what they need to do?
So for the student data, um, for member Paige, you are right, we use Infinite Campus to track the student data. The employee data is a little um, more tricky because we have a high agency volume. So we would have to come up with HR, come up with a plan. Um, I had been working with Wayne to set up a system called JotForm, and that would be a QR code that we could use for agency and full-time staff. It has not been implemented yet, but we have been steadily working behind the scenes. We have the form completed, we have um, a skeleton of it to show Dr. Stubblefield, but we have not implemented it. We've done some testing on my staff just to see how it works. It goes into a different database, the COVID tracers are then able to track it, and then we can print out reports from that. We're just trying to figure out how to get it to talk to Infinite Campus so that we're not pulling data from everywhere.
And in some districts, I know they go through their HR department, and they help them collect data. Is that a possibility? Is that something that we utilize? Because we want to make sure we got the information right.
So we, for our people that we directly employ, we have accurate data. Like they're reporting their absence, like if they have a COVID-related illness, they contact the health service department and the um, contact tracers. We have several employees that are contracted with an agency, so if they are out and they're saying it to their agency, although they're in our buildings every day, that's what uh, Ms. Lewis is describing. So our HR and our health services, for our people that we employ directly, we have accurate data. It's all of the agencies that we contract with that we don't, so that's the part that um, on the staff side that we would have to have a better system in place. So HR and health services currently do that for our employees.
And, and the reason I ask that, because we had a dashboard, and it was very inconsistent, and I don't know what the problem was, but you, it never seemed to be clear, it was always behind, and if we're going to do this, we want to make sure we do it right. And I just want to know, is there a plan? Because we're saying this, but what's the plan?
Can I piggyback on a question from Ms. Page, just kind of prompted? Um, when we talk about COVID-related absences or illness, um, are we asking, is it to show that the employer, that the student has to show a positive test? Or is it if they're just calling in sick and saying they were exposed? Um, I, I guess, and that's probably a board, I'm curious how we're tracking that now, but for the board, um, when we're looking at this policy, is that something that we need to be clear about? How we're tracking what that looks like, so?
So for students, we have in Infinite Campus a code of, that's HS, and it's an HS one, HS two, um, and it goes up to HS four. So when the student initially calls in to the attendance clerk, they, they may say, hey, I'm calling out today because I'm sick. The attendance clerk will then ask, what are your symptoms? Transfer that individual student's information to the nurse, the nurse will do a follow-up call, and then that's how the final HS flag is assigned to that student. If the illness, say that they call in and tell us, hey, I have fever, I have sore throat, I might have been exposed, but they go to the doctor, and the doctor says, no, it's allergies. We could then go in and re-code that same absence as that is non-COVID related, so it wouldn't have a HS code assigned to it. So any of the data that I pull for COVID is assigned with a COVID code, and they either have been exposed, they have symptoms, they are negative but still symptomatic, so we're presuming them positive and just not popping positive or relaying positive on a test result, and that's how, or they're refusing to test at all. So that's how they get categorized.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I just wanted to hop on real quick and say um, thank you to the communications department for rolling this survey out and the work that you did to compile this information. Um, I also want to say thank you to everyone that provided their feedback, so whether that's staff, parents, students and staff. I mean, yeah, students and staff, staff that are also parents, all of the groups that were present, um, thank you for providing that feedback. Um, the one thing that I will share, um, which was in my remarks at the last meeting, was that um, my decision would be based solely on um, the, the information that has been provided. And as we have just learned, two-thirds of the subgroups um, that were listed said yes to keep the mask policy. Those subgroups being parents of our students and parents who are also staff members in our buildings. So with that being said, um, I will be voting for option one, um, because I do believe that that is what our families and our staff, um, who are also parents have said. Um, but I also want to get a little bit of clarity. Um, with option one, by keeping option one, um, if any of the listed entities increase or change their current status to show an increase in transmission, we will return to masking. That is a question that I have, and with just providing clarity for myself, but also our broader constituents. Um, and lastly, um, before I shut up, I just want to say thank you to our health services team, um, and you all have been amazing um, the last couple of years, but even before that, but even more so with all of the twists and turns um, that COVID and this pandemic have had on our um, district, um, and just want to say thank you for the work that you do.
So the clarity around that, so yes, like if Thursday, when the CDC updated it and it said we were back in high, because they do high, medium, low, then we would send out announcements similar to what we did this week and say effective this date, we go back to mask being required. So um, I think it's, uh, so honestly, with the, the two entities that have been consistent would be the CDC and KDHE, they have regular reportings, and the UG is really figuring it out. But if any one of those en, entities at any point were to put us back in a high or red um, zone, then yes, we would go back to mask if um, option one is what the board um, proceeded with, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear, and I, I express it to everyone. When we look at the data or when I talk to Dr. Stubblefield about the data, we usually go with the most conservative choice. So this time, you know, UG didn't really have a way, the state still had us at moderate, and the CDC had us at low. And so you, we met in the middle and went with the conservative choice. What I want the board to know is as we switch to an endemic model, so we're going from pandemic to endemic, that we will have to flip-flop based on seasonal approaches depending on what happens. So it's not a, every, everyone does something different, it's been a while since they've all been the same color. So trying to just stick it to one, we need to really be mindful that adding all three and then going with the most conservative approach is the best way to go.
Other questions or thoughts, thank you for that, Ms. Lewis.
Another question of clarity, so option two said we would go to a local option, which would be the UG, but I've now heard both of you say that the UG is not a reliable um, entity, and with all due respect, not a, a good source for that information, is that what I'm hearing?
I wouldn't say not reliable, what I would say is that they had a backlog of cases. And what we're noticing is there being more at-home tests that are being performed, that we really don't know the numbers that are being reported. The numbers that you see are the numbers that are actually being reported through entities. So what we are trying to guesstimate is the unknown, and we all know when we try to guesstimate the unknown, it puts ourselves in some sticky situations. So I wouldn't say that they're unreliable, they could only base their decision on the data that they receive from folks that turn in their tests. We have individuals that do at-home tests and never give those results.
And because of the, uh, the only other thing I will add is be, because they're waiting on those individuals, their regular reporting, because they know that people have taken the test, and then they're waiting to see it. So it is impact, impacted, like at, at the beginning of the pandemic, they were able to give regular updates, like on a weekly basis. So um, similar to us and other entities, they are adapting and ju, and adjusting from moving to a pandemic to an endemic. Um, at this current time, um, they, and then they rely heavily on like what the CDC and KDHE is putting out there, and at the same time, balancing what they're seeing um, from the people that they're seeing face-to-face uh, within our communities that are requesting tests. So they just, I think they have more nuanced data, while the CDC and KDHE are looking specifically at like hospitals, vaccinations, and what is there, uh, the UG is dealing with some more nuanced data, which um, similar to our, a challenge, which we have a lot of agency employees, right? So unlike some districts who don't, they can calculate that threshold a little quicker. It impacts how we can turn around that information as well.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, Ms. Humphreys?
So right now, we have mask optional because we're following the CDC and KDHE, however the alphabet goes, recommendations. If we pick option two, then if one of our locations has five percent or more uh, COVID-related absences, that location, no matter what the CDC is saying, will become mask required until the absences go down.
Yes.
Okay.
If I can piggyback on that question just a little bit, I'm concerned, I want to make sure that our communication, no matter what option we choose, we know that things will become very fluid very fast. And so my, my comment is just making sure that our communication is very strong. We've got a lot of feedback before on how we communicate and the different avenues, and I knew this, but I didn't know this. So whichever way it goes, just making sure that we have a strong communication system is important to me.
Thank you.
And for clarity, if we choose option one, we're going along with KDHE and CDC, and, and maybe, depending on what the health department says.
I still look at the, I'm on a call with the UG weekly, so I still look at their data, I still get feedback, and that is what I give to Dr. Stubblefield and Stephen, and if it's something changes.
And because of what was changed the last time, are we still under that it's optional? But then we're gonna wait and see what the data shows here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're on that.
We, option one is what we're doing now. Option one is the, so if going with option one, that is what we are currently doing.
Okay.
The only change will be made is when the data changes weekly. Option two would be something new.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Wayne?
And thank you, and help me with, understand with option one, and the data is high. mask would be optional or mandate?
No, required.
Required, okay.
Yeah, well, option one, whichever, like if the CDC says you're high, so mask should be required, that's what we would do. But if they say we're low, um, and the other ones are similar, like they're where our current state is, that's when mask would be optional. Option one is basically what we are doing currently.
So with option one, low is you wear your mask if you want. Medium is you need to talk to your healthcare provider if you have underlying conditions and you really need to look at wearing a mask. High is masking regardless.
Yes, Ms. Humphreys, I'm sorry.
So option two gives us a little bit more local control over our building. So it may not be community-wide, five, but if we have a building with high infection rates, we can address it there, whether the CDC shows it or not. Okay.
Yes.
Dr. Wen?
Whether the CDC shows it or not, the answer is yes?
So in option two, you really would just be looking at the data based off the, the building?
Right.
Um, you could, we didn't roll the two together, honestly, because we just wanted to be clear about what we were getting from the survey and, um, to provide clean options. It does not mean that you couldn't throw your own option out there. We just wanted to provide two, um, options based off the feedback from the survey. And with us talking to, with, um, Ms. Lewis talking to the health officials, they just said if you went completely masked, optional, just make sure you had a way to go back to mask if it were necessary. So that's what that option reflects.
Gives us a backup plan.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, that's not what I asked. What I asked is if it was 5% or whatever, Ms. Humphreys said, no matter what CDC said. So if it's 5% and low, or 5% and high?
You would be in mask.
But it has to be 5%. If it's high, it's gonna go mask anyway. If the county is high, it's gonna go mask anyway, whether it's 5% or not. No?
That's not what option two said.
Oh, no, I'm just saying the si- the, the situation. If we go with option two and the, the county was high, you was, you still would keep it optional?
That's what option two says.
The way, the way it's, option two is currently written, if we're looking at the 5% threshold to determine whether we would require masks or not. So it would be mask optional at, at the district unless a specific building has 5% or more absences, the way it's written. Um, even if the CDC or the Health Department or KDHE said Wyandotte County is high, if a school did not meet that 5% absences, the way it's currently presented, they would still be mask optional. I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, it did, thank you very much.
So I, I would actually, um, and thank you for the discussion. Just for the purposes of moving this along forward, I would actually, uh, move to that the Board of Education remain mask optional for the remainder of the year. Um, with the exception if COVID-related absences exceed the 5% threshold percentage in any location, that only the affected building will return to mask requirements and will need to drop below the threshold before moving to optional masking.
Second?
Was that option one or two?
So option two, that we would, yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Open for questions or discussion. Dr. Wen?
So where did the 5% come from? In speaking with, I'll say, Shani Mission, it, it wasn't clear their answer.
So when I talked to the Health Department and when I spoke with the state, they gave a range and that was that range, 3 to 5%.
3 to 5?
Mm-hmm.
And so our option two just?
And, and most districts are doing 5%.
But there's no other logic? There's no other logic, no explanation other than just?
We just want what, what the conservative was for those buil- for buildings and building sizes and chose the 5% number.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
How does this and how does the current motion impact other, um, cross-collaboration events? So for instance, um, if you are in the Harmon cluster and your kid goes to, um, Emerson for Kid Zone, um, and the Emerson school is currently on a, on a, uh, mask mandate, how does that interfere? How does, how is this policy impacting all of the students that go to numerous schools but go to Emerson? What's that impact and what does that, um, enforcement look like? But even when I think about sports, um, what, what impact does this have on teams that are cross-competing together? So if Schlegel has a mask requirement, um, but Harmon doesn't, um, what does that look like? Um, so I guess those are the areas that I, 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 I am also wondering about how that impacts the rest of the year.
So the first part of your question, we would handle it similar to, um, how it's handled in the, um, community. Like when you come to Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, when we had a mask requirement, people were required to wear a mask. But when we, when our staff or others go to other locations, they follow those guidelines. So as far as kids go- coming to Kid Zone, if it's a location that requires a mask, when they're there, they would have to wear it there. But if they were going to a place that did not, they would not because it would be difficult to say, well, you're from here and you're from there and to manage that. And as far as athletics, masks have not been required, um, this entire year. Like our students have had a mask requirement when they're competing. But if you are, um, outside or competing, you haven't had to wear a mask, the spectators have. So we would just continue with that, um, enforcement, um, as we have been this entire year.
I guess I'm confused. So if these are COVID-related absences and you're saying Emerson has COVID-related absences, but we're going to continue to mix the water with kids from Frank Russian, I can't think of the other ones that go to Emerson in this cluster. Would we not want students to not be going to Emerson if that, if they're experiencing a high rate of COVID-related incidents?
I, so what I'm just sharing with you is what in the larger society has been practiced, um, in regards to that. So it, because I, I'm just being transparent. It would be difficult for our staff in Kid Zone. I mean, either we would say you can't go to Kid Zone because you're at a high rate, which would not necessarily be what's best with families. We could strongly encourage the students to wear it if it's optional, but it would be difficult to manage multiple kids from multiple sites with different adults, um, if that is the situation. So whatever the requirement for that building is, um, again, similar to how we go from location is probably the only way that we can manage it and enforce it with fidelity. I know it's not ideal, but that's just the reality of where we would be.
Would you shut it down? If, let's say Emerson's Kid Zone was at a very high level, would you shut them down?
We haven't shut down this year. Um, we've just required masks. The only time that we have closed, and it was district-wide, it was because of the number of staff that, um, we couldn't fill all of the substitutes. But we have not closed down. We've just required the mask.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Call for the vote?
Miss, okay. Seeing none, um, so just as a reminder and, um, for practice so that I make sure I do this. So we are, we're all on the same page. Uh, Ms. Smith, the motion currently on the floor is that the Kansas City Board of Education, uh, remain mask optional unless there are COVID-related absences exceeding the 5% threshold percentage in any location, then only the affected building would return to mask requirements and would need to drop below the threshold before moving to optional masking. And that's been moved and seconded. So Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, um, I just want to say before I give my vote, my vote speaks for our, our physical, not only our physical, I know physical is important, but our mental health and our educational health. So I vote yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphreys?
Janie Humphreys, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Dr. Brownlee Page?
Uh, before I vote, my vote has always been in regard to public health, and that's why that's critical. So I vote no.
Rachel Russell?
My vote is always, um, based on the response of the community and two-thirds, again, of the community said yes, we should keep our mask policy as is. So my vote is no.
Dr. Wen?
Well, I'm conflicted because I, I'm concerned that if the district, if the county is red, this doesn't cross over. So I will say no.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you. Um, and before we continue, I do just want to say thank you, Ms. Lewis, Dr. Stubblefield, and thank you, Board, for the dialogue, the discussion, the questions that were so thoughtful. I think, um, as Ms. Page said, um, all of us this entire time, um, and each one of you, I'm grateful for your perspectives, your experiences and your thoughtful input in this, not just tonight's discussion, but throughout the discussions on COVID-related matters. And this is an example that our teachers could probably take, uh, on civics for, um, and show our students about what democracy looks like when, um, you have an elected board having thoughtful dialogue about, um, how we make decisions and why we make decisions. So I'm just grateful for the thoughtful dialogue that we were able to have tonight. So thank you, Board. Ms., uh, Dr. Wen, I'm sorry.
And just for a question, um, and I guess a request. In the future, you know, we can, emails can be embargoed before they go public. And so I just thought, maybe I missed the email or miss, maybe I missed the, the information. But, um, you know, getting phone calls and emails that you all have changed and when you open up the web pages, boom, now optional. So I don't know if it's professional courtesy or just that, you know, you read every, every meeting, no surprises. And I think that's a joke because this is example, the way that my constituents called me, surprise. So I would just inquest in the, in the future, that we can get an email embargoed first before things go public. So thank you.
And I just, not to, I, I just want to be clear. I did send an email and the announcement was made based off of the board, direction on March 8th. And so we sent the email, I sent the email early Friday morning and we made the announcement late, um, Friday afternoon.
And I said, I may have missed it, so I made that clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Lopez, I mean, sorry, I was thinking of Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lopez, sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Russell.
I just want to also say, um, thank you to Dr. Stubblefield. Um, on Friday, I appreciated getting that email, but also, um, your courtesy to the families and students of KCKPS and waiting until Monday to, um, return to making masks optional, um, to allow families truly the opportunity to have those discussions with their students and the impact of, of this policy decision, um, and how best their family should move forward. So I really want to thank you for your leadership and your thoughtfulness and thinking of, of, of families and students at that time. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Okay. So we're continuing on with our agenda. Next up is, um, our executive session.
Yes, so, um, staff, thank you. Um, you're free to go with the exception of Ms. Devon.
Okay, and thank you, staff, for all your hard work and continue and we will see you. Thank you. Um, next, I would entertain a motion that the Board of Education recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of all parties involved under coma within the invitation to Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Ms. Devon, and Mr. Robert Armstrong, um, and the board going in at 7:13 for 15 minutes.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphreys?
Janie Humphreys, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Dr. Brownlee Page?
Yolanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wen?
Dr. Wen, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Dr. Brownlee Page?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, we are back in open session, thanks again, Board and staff, Dr. Stubblefield, and just a reminder, we are back here, Board, tomorrow at 1:00 PM to start with budget conversations, and then we will have part of our self-evaluation with Dr. Weisman tomorrow afternoon here in the boardroom. And if you need a Zoom link, let us, we've got that set up as well. Yes, Dr. Nguyen?
I need a Zoom link, and I'm just, again, expressing views, I find it interesting that when Stacy was on the Board, folks would lift lips to make sure everybody could count, I don't understand why you had this on a Wednesday, you know?
The...
Just saying.
We had sent out dates, trying to find dates that worked for everybody, so that's why we're having it on a Wednesday, because it's what's worked best for everyone.
Exactly.
Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned.